Good.
All right, I'll go ahead and call this July 10th meeting to order. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following: consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body; and the consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions of legal advice by such counsel: (1) NRV Mall Associates LLC versus Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County at All;[46.85][46.85](2) Developers Agreement between Montgomery County and Pricesfork, LLC. In addition, discussion or consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disuminary or resignations of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body (1) Montgomery Tourism Development Council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. DeMott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Cuthbert?
Aye.
Settles.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
No.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. DeMott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Cuthbert?
Aye.
Settles.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative reported vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our word to you that we're only talking about things that we're supposed to be talking about in the closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. DeMott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Cuthbert?
Aye.
Settles.
At this time, I would ask us to observe a moment of silence, and then I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is presentations, and we've got VDOT with David Clark. David, would you please come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Some updates as we start the fiscal year. It's been a while, actually, I think, since I've been to the Montgomery Board. But we had a lot of activities towards the end of fiscal year as we reconcile our books and our funding and go into a new year. One of the things we've done was a lot of patching lately, and now we're back into our new fiscal year. We've got a bunch of money that's got to last us all the way till next June. We've been concentrating mostly on routine maintenance, machining gravel roads, which are always a labor-intensive maintenance item in the dry summer runs, some brush cutting, shoulder repair. Every now and then, we've got a store where we've had to clean up some debris, some washed-out pipes. That's hit mostly sort of the southern half of County and at Floyd County, but we've had to do a lot of that work, too. Our big projects that they have going on, probably the biggest news for the South Beach interchange is tonight and the next several nights will be closed. Next two nights, West Valley will be closed. Wednesday and Thursday, the East Valleys will be closed as they will be setting bridge beams. They're trucking them in from a casting yard. They're over there right now waiting for nine o'clock to happen, and they will shut it down and set those. Hopefully, at five in the morning, you can drive through there, take a look at those, get your first look at them if they'll be there. And then, the next couple nights, they'll be doing all that. And the 81 bridges are bridges going on. I say bridges because it's also the Route 232 Bridge going into Rafford at exit 109. As we're putting up a bridge on 460, we're taking down a bridge over 81 as we're redoing that 232 exit 109 interchange. So we're trying to do that most of the off-peak hours at night, go over that traffic on 81 at night. Upcoming projects we're working on are, for your unpaved roads, are about 643 Yellow Sulfur Road. We'll do another section of that, maybe two sections, one on each end, next summer. We're finishing up, getting ready to get finished. Still got a couple months left on the project at Reiner, at Route 8, and Union Valley Road. Sydney Church Road is finished, the first section of that. It's not paved all the way through. We had to break that up into two sections because there's a major drainage project right in the middle, and it gets deceptively narrow, and the drainage is deceptively intense right there in the middle of Sydney Church Road. So if you've been out, Sydney Church Road goes from Can Carriero Brook Road over to Fairview Church Road in the Reiner area. It's a cut-through road. It's not a dead-end road. I think that'll get some decent amount of traffic once it's all the way through. That was done recently, and I think that turned out real well. It's a good project. We still hope to get the upper end of Brush Creek Road also this summer. We've got a crew working with another county right now, and that crew will be over in Montgomery County, working on the Dobbins Hollow end of Brush Creek Road. That's all I have as far as updating. We've still got some paving going on, so I think the slurry schedule is done. Still have some surface treatment, maybe a little bit more asphalt, land mix to go. But I'll keep you updated on that next month. They're not doing any work in the county right this month.
Start off with Supervisor Shepherd. Do you have any questions for Mr. Clark?
I have some issues I'd like to discuss with him.
That sounds good.
Several. At least two of them, maybe three, pertain to brush. Brooksville Road, near Mount Zion, on that hillside, that steep curves, there's a tractor-trailer that delivers feed over there to that old store building site, and he uses Brooksville Road. And it's my understanding he tore up his truck just recently on brush. And I know it's bad everywhere, and that's one complaint I had from someone else. There's one that I'm going to complain about as far as a bus driver, and I've never said anything to you before about it, but it's right at Mount Zion and Spotswood, and it's on the opposite side of the road from Spotswood Drive. But when you come through there, it's like a hedge, and it's just so close to the road, and it's on a, it's right on a crest of a hill. So you have to stay to the right because you can't see what's coming. Not that you shouldn't, anyway, but anyway. I had another request for Long Shop Road, and it's, I Googled it on my Google Maps, and 4,600 is where it's at exactly. If you Google that, it's in that steep curve on that hillside, that real steep hill. On the inside of that curve, I know they cut a bunch of brush here a couple years ago that helped, but the gentleman that called me said he'd like to see that bank cut back a little more. After they installed that guardrail on the outside of that thing, there's hardly any room, especially for a school bus, by the way, to come through there. And then, I do have one question. The speed study that is being done, or has been done, or should have been done on Whitethorne Road, any updates?
I have not heard one, but I'll check and see where that is.
Because the gentleman that put in that request, he cornered me Saturday evening and was looking for an answer, so.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thanks. Supervisor DeMott?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
This is sort of a weird question, but today on 460 bypass, there seemed to be a lot of dangerous debris in the road. When I was going there, like, big, you know, pieces of rubber that were like half in the road, and then some kind of, I don't know, it looked like a long pipe, like steel pipe thing. And so what was happening was people were, you know, trying to swerve to avoid hitting their car with it. I don't know where it all came from. Maybe it came from the same place. And I guess you guys cleaned that up, right? Or how does that, that's what I thought. And it was going from Blacksburg to Christiansburg, so I'm not sure what happened there.
Okay. We'll do a run through there some of the people hauling stuff around.
Yeah, I think that's probably what happened.
Supervisor King?
Right there on that spot, you was talking about Route 8 in Fairview and where they're doing all that grading and piping and all. I had a few concerns about the water that's going to stay there, and concerns about mosquitoes.
We're, there's an issue on the post office side, and I know we're trying to work to get that out of there. It wasn't on the plans. It wasn't addressed on the plans. Contractors agreed to ditch that further off, basically off the project site, but before that's done, we'll make sure the thing drains the way it should.
Well, it's right there on the stand in pond where they put on the other side of the.
Oh, well, there's, I mean, there's a, there's a stormwater management basin that has to be put in by regulation. I don't know what else you can do. Usually, it doesn't stay in there very long.
Okay. All right. In Pineapple Woods, we got the speed limit on that yet?
No. They did agree to one. I don't know if it's as low as what they wanted, but I'll see what they'll, they said they could put a 45 there, I believe.
Okay.
I'll see why they haven't done that yet.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
I don't have anything about my area, other than I'm still concerned about what we're doing down there on North Main Street and how that is proceeding. But I do have something. I've been going up and down the 460, Route 11, to, through, from Christiansburg to Salem, and down in Elliston, there is a bridge that I've noticed that is patched, bumpy, pieces, everything. When you get across it, you're not sure you're going to go across it. But I think that's just me because I go every day, and I've been doing it for about a month. But I wondered if that was part of any thing that you were going to do on 460-11 in Gary's territory.
The bridge you're probably speaking of is one of Hales, right there past Hales, between Hales and Ellison Elementary?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know. It may be the one that's just before the village of Elliston.
Okay.
Do you notice that one? You know that one? And it's on, and it's on the.
Those bridges are inspected once a year by a consultant bridge inspection, and we have our own bridge inspectors, and any maintenance items are noted and scheduled. I'll see if there's a schedule for redecking those, because they usually don't like to let those, you know, bad deck, pretty soon means, you know, a bad substructure, too.
Right. Because I'd looked at it, and I thought, you've done so many.
Yes.
Bridges along there and renewed them, and this one looks as if it hasn't been touched in a very long time.
Okay. I'll see what the schedules for that. I'm sure they've got it scheduled more or not.
Okay. It would be nice. You keep up with it, eh, Gary?
I'll watch after.
Supervisor Creed?
I just have a question, and I think you saw the email from the lady in Vicar had some comments, and I was just going to ask if you would be able to explain the situation, what VDOT's doing on Vicar Switch Road.
Sure. The question came up in an email from someone on Vicar Road that we had done some patching, they said paving. We've done some paving on Vicar Road, but we hadn't done the paper, the asphalt and paper that smoothes it out, rolls it. And it's true, we didn't. We did it with a, we spread it with motor grader and used a roller on that, and you tend to get a much rougher surface. We typically do patches like that. What was the confusing part about this one was a very long patch, and it looked like it was, should have been paved. It was about a third mile, a patch. And typically, if we were doing a paving job, we'd put an inch and a half over top of the road that's there, put that with a paver, usually hire it out because we don't have that kind of equipment, and roll it, and you get a nice, smooth, almost looks like what you get on the interstate. This was a maintenance operation. It was a patch. It was intended to get the road back in a shape. Roads tend to get out of shape, bumps, and depressions, and you can't fix those irregularities with just a tar and gravel surface, which is what Vicar Road is. It may not look like it now because it's all been knocked off, a little bit loose stuff, but it is a tar and gravel road, and it's scheduled to be resurfaced next year. We had some money left over for doing some heavy maintenance work at the end of this fiscal year. In fact, we did some fairly large amounts of patching on Catawba Road and Nellies Cave Road as well, something in the same magnitude as we did on Vicar. Vicar was the longest one, about 1,500 feet total. I think actually we did more than that, about 1,000 feet each on Catawba and Nellies Cave. I haven't been able to look at those, but it's probably very similar type of work, and it was just a matter of having the funds available to do some patching. It's more than just patching the pothole. It's really going edge to edge and getting a good, it's not smooth as with a roller, but it gets the road back in shape and ready to pave over, whether it be a tar and gravel or other type of surface.
Thank you very much. Is that, are there any other questions? Thank you, David. I appreciate you being here.
Thanks, David.
The next item on our agenda is public hearing. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to the law in the New Rivers Valley section of the Roanoke Times on June 25th and July 2nd, and in the News Messenger on July 5th and July 8th, namely, the proposed restrictions of tractor-trailer, semi-trailer combinations on State Route 624, Mount Tabor Road slash Newport Road, and namely, the Board of Supervisors intend to request that VDOT to restrict through tractor-trailer or semi-trailer combinations on State Route 624, beginning at the NCL of Blacksburg Route 624 and ending at the intersection of Route 311 Catawba Valley Drive, with the terminal, terminal distance equalling approximately 18.61 miles. The alternative route proposed is Business US Route 460, beginning at the intersection of Mount Tabor Road, then traveling north on Business US Route 460 to US Route 460, then traveling east on US Route 460 to I-81, and then traveling north on I-81 to exit 140 to Route 311, then traveling north on Route 311 and ending at the intersection of Route 624 Newport Road and Route 311 Catawba Valley Road, with the distance equalling approximately 47.5 miles. At this point in time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. There are two individuals who have signed up. This is the Board's opportunity to listen to what you have to say. It is not necessarily the Board will respond to you. Our staff will take down your name and address. If you'll state your name and address, you'll have five minutes. The first person we've got set up, that's signed up, is Mo Johnson.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Mo Johnson, 3030 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg. I'd like to thank Mr. Clark and the staff at VDOT for getting us to this point of the public hearing. It's been many months, but I know there's been a lot of work done in the background to get to this point. And I'd also like to thank the Supervisors of Montgomery County and Roanoke County for allowing this public hearing to come before you. I believe you all received an email from me that was forwarded through Mr. Meadows because my hostmaster on Gmail said your email address wasn't correct, which we're looking into that and why. In that email, I stated the five reasons that I support this restriction. Number one, obviously, when it gets blocked, both lanes get blocked, and the semi-truck gets stuck in that curve, and that's for hours. That isn't five, 10, 15 minutes. That's hours, and that means first responders, whether it's fire, rescue, or law enforcement cannot get to an incident or return from an incident past that hairpin turn on Mount Tabor Road. Obviously, the other reason is Mill Creek flows right under the hairpin turn, and paper-carrying hazardous materials go into Mill Creek and then end up in the North Fork, the Roanoke Valley. Also, Virginia Code 42.2 that I showed you four does prohibit vehicles from passing over double yellow lines to pass, except for a pedestrian or a bicycle passing. A truck cannot make it around that curve without crossing the double yellow line, so that's another good reason to put a restriction in. And there's significant damage to the guardrails and to the tractor-trailers that get stuck at that curve. So it's really going to be a benefit for the owner或operator of those tractor-trailers if they don't go down there and get, and get stuck and get damaged. And obviously, citizens going to and from work, trying to make appointments, doctor's appointments, teaching, whatever it might be, they're going to get delayed and cannot get to Blacksburg, Christiansburg in a timely manner, which usually takes 45 minutes if you're going to go the back way to get back to Christiansburg. I also, in the email to you, stated that 20 people or so have spoken to you all about this incident and supporting restricting tractor-trailers. And I also copied all the emails that I was copying on to you all. Over the last two to three weeks, there's been at least two other incidents in that curve. We can see that the guardrail has been hit and damaged, and Saturday night, Dr. Tina Smuss was coming home, and she, I think, is going to speak to you about an incident that I found hard to believe. And I talked to some other people on Mount Tabor Road today, and at least three others verified this happened and went on for five or eight miles. I know in television, that's called a teaser, but I'm going to just leave it right there because I didn't see it. I just talked to other people who did see it. So I will, in my comments, and support restricting tractor-trailers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker that we have signed up looks to be Deb Dyer. Is Dyer?
Yeah.
Or maybe it's.
Deb.
Deb. It looked like a B. I apologize.
My name is Deb Dyer. I live on a horse farm 2.7 miles from Main Street on Mount Tabor Road. My address is actually 418 Dorydale Hills, and it used to be 2178 Mount Tabor. My farm grew to occupy the kind of houses alike that we have now our home street. I didn't really want that, but we did. I utilize a truck and horse trailer to move my livestock about. I'm applying length of this trailer of 72 feet, including a dual-lane truck and a six-horse trailer that I put behind. I have travel through the air pin, but I avoid it if I can. In other words, my length of trailer, properly approached and avoiding the other lines, of course, I could not stay on my side of the road and get around that curve, but I can get around that curve with that length of piece of equipment. I do that on days when I'm trying to go someplace to a horse show, and folks are trying to get to, what's that place? Hoagie Dale for football games, things like that. In the past six months, we've had several semi-trailers and one bus that need to get stuck, requiring, as Mo said, big records to come by and try to put them back on the road again, and it takes forever. In the meantime, service vehicles, school buses, FedEx, and other small utility vehicles, people trying to go to work and them trying to get home from work are stuck there sometimes for hours. Something has to be done. We need to prohibit over-the-road semis and other vehicles who know, we know, cannot navigate this curve. Warning them, as the sign does now on Mount Tabor Road, just shy of, just past Bishop Road, says, "I recommend that you go this way." I don't know if anybody reads that sign. I've been trying to get my wife to read that as we drive back and forth at least four times a week, and she never has seen that sign. So it's, it's obviously flashing and all that. So my concern is that not all vehicles owned by people who are on Mount Tabor Road should be prohibited from going in that direction. I think we need to define what we mean by semi-trucks and trailers and how long, and I think really we should define the prohibition on the length of the trailer. And I think the problem is that the trailer's 50 or 60 feet long, or not, 51 foot long, I guess, in Virginia, and as they try to go around that curve, the front end can make it, but the back end's way over here someplace, and there's a lot of trail, and it does not track where there are trucks, because it goes off to the side. So I'm sure there are other things should be said about this, but I'm sure that VDOT has dealt with this problem in other places in the state, and they can figure out what we might do, having to ask a truck and trailer to turn around and go another 47 miles around to get. My assumption is they don't come to deliver products on Mount Tabor Road. They deal with this as a shortcut to Newcastle and maybe to Roanoke, I don't know, coming down 460. I'm always amazed that as people like AAA send people from Kansas to my house bringing horses, and they use a AAA map, and they come through places like Pike Villa on 460, so that I'm not sure that the drivers really know what they can do and what they can handle. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
Thank you. That's all the individuals who have signed up. However, you don't have to be signed up. If there are other individuals that would like to address the Board, I would ask that you come forward and have a seat on the front row. Is there any individuals who would like to address the Board on this public hearing? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Margaret Roston, and 2124 Mount Tabor Road, and that really is a bad curve. And there are people that do have shorter vehicles that are articulated that should be allowed to go through, but not these ridiculously long things that can't make it. So getting something that fits. I was just trying to remember, is, if there's a weigh station that they're trying to avoid? Are they going down Mount Tabor and then hooking up somewhere like Blacksburg Road way up or something? And just staying off 81? I can't remember if there's, I mean, there's not one between Christiansburg and Roanoke or Salem, but is there one from Salem that they can stay off 81? I don't know. Anyway, but one time, at least once, the house trailer's been stuck there. So it's just, those people should come the other way. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Again, thank you.
Jawotor Regional 1600 Midloth Drive. I definitely share the concerns of the local residents, but there are two concerns. The way stated, the first, the route, alternative route, is not viable, especially the first part of it, because of the mistakes the town council of Blacksburg made. And the second, I was wondering whether there would be some exceptions for the local work that may be done. How that's going to be offered.
Thank you.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg. When I read the description in the agenda, I'm thinking that this starts, I'm not sure where, Mount Tabor doesn't hit 460, so I wasn't exactly sure where this alternative starts. A lot of people come down Cobank Hollow Road and hit Mount Tabor, and we come that way. So whatever kind of restrictions are going to be done, need to make sure that Cobank Hollow at the beginning of 460, or certainly right there at Cobank and Mount Tabor Road, know that if this goes through, that, you know, they can't go through on Mount Tabor Road to Roanoke. I also wanted to tell you that I, there was an incident when I was on Mount Tabor Road riding my bike, and there was an emergency in a pasture. And fortunately, the forestry service vehicle was right there, saw me, pulled off with me, and when I found out that the people in the pasture needed help, he immediately called on his radio for help. So everything went very quickly, but that gave me the sense of how fast people need help in an emergency, because they're like, are they here yet? Are they coming? And of course, it's just been minutes. And fortunately, we, you know, the rescue squad was right there, and they got the call immediately, so it couldn't have been more than five or six minutes. It was unbelievably fast. But that made me think about what would happen to people on the other side if there was any kind of blockage, and if you did have a heart attack. Fortunately, this was a drug interaction, and she was okay. But if you had a heart attack or a stroke, what those hours and minutes.
Is there any individuals who would like to address the board on this public hearing? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Margaret Roston, and 2124 Mount Tabor Road. And that really is a bad curve. And there are people that do have shorter vehicles that are articulated that should be allowed to go through, but not these ridiculously long things that can't make it. So getting something that fits. I was just trying to remember if there is a weigh station that they're trying to avoid. Are they going down Mount Tabor and then hooking up somewhere like Blacksburg Road way up or something and just staying off 81? I can't remember if there's... I mean, there's not one between Christiansburg and Roanoke or Salem, but is there one from Salem that they can stay off 81? I don't know. Anyway, but one time, at least once, the house trailer's been stuck there. So it's just, those people should come the other way. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Again, thank you.
Jawotur, Virginia, 1600 Midloth Drive. I definitely share the concerns of the local residents, but there are two concerns. The way stated, the first, the route, alternative route, is not viable, especially the first part of it because of the mistakes the town council of Blacksburg made. And the second, I was wondering whether there would be some exceptions for the local work that may be done. How would that's going to be offered? Thank you.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg. When I read the description in the agenda, I'm thinking that this starts... I'm not sure where... Mount Tabor doesn't hit 460, so I wasn't exactly sure where this alternative starts. A lot of people come down Cobank Hollow Road and hit Mount Tabor, and we come that way. So whatever kind of restrictions are going to be done, need to make sure that Cobank Hollow at the beginning of 460, or certainly right there at Cobank and Mount Tabor Road, know that if this goes through, that, you know, they can't go through on Mount Tabor Road to Roanoke. I also wanted to tell you that I... There was an incident when I was on Mount Tabor Road riding my bike, and there was an emergency in a pasture. And fortunately, the Forest Service vehicle was right there, saw me, pulled off with me. And when I found out that the people in the pasture needed help, he immediately called on his radio for help. So everything went very quickly, but that gave me the sense of how fast people need help in an emergency because they're like, are they here yet? Are they coming? And of course, it's just been minutes. And fortunately, you know, the rescue squad was right there, and they got the call immediately, so it couldn't have been more than five or six minutes. It was unbelievably fast. But that made me think about what would happen to people on the other side if there was any kind of blockage, and if you did have a heart attack. Fortunately, this was a drug interaction, and she was okay. But again, heart attack or a stroke, what those hours and minutes mean when you have a delay on that curve. So absolutely, something needs to be done because of emergencies. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals that... Please come forward.
I'm Tina Smoosh, 5555 Mount Tabor Road in Montgomery County. My mailing address is Catawba, but I live in Montgomery County. So Saturday night, there was an eight-mile continuous potential disaster that occurred because a large tractor trailer carrying multiple levels of cars had gotten almost stuck on the bad curve and then decided to back up until they could turn around and get back out to Newport Road. So when I left the fish fry at dusk, I was waved down by people along the road going, "Slow down. There's a tractor trailer going backwards in the other lane, and we want to warn you." So this tractor trailer on this narrow road was going very slowly backwards in their lane. I was headed towards it, and I thought that it would back down dry, run, and get turned around, and then head on out to 311. What I didn't realize was it couldn't back down dry, run. It backed up eight miles on Mount Tabor Road in the dark, finally, and must have backed into either Galleon Ridge Road or Sandy Ridge Road before it could turn around and go in the right direction. So I went slowly past it, flashing my lights for a couple of miles. Luckily, there was no traffic coming. I thought it had probably already turned around, but it was an ongoing eight-mile backup and much of it after dark. So that's what we can prevent by going ahead and eliminating tractor trailer traffic on going over the bad curve. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other individuals that would like to be heard? Seeing no one coming forward at this point in time, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. The next item on our agenda is public address. We don't have anyone signed up, but that does not mean that you can't address the board. If there's individuals that would like to address the board on any subject, they can come forward, and you would have five minutes. Again, this is not the board's time to respond. It's our time to listen to you. Are there any individuals that would like to address the board? Please state your name and address, and you've got five minutes.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I was late on getting the three letters to you, but hopefully you got the three letters from me. The first one is regarding additional comment period time from the Forest Service. It's addressed to Tony Tuck, and there are some points that I have wanted to make with it because I've been over this a couple, three times, and it's difficult to understand exactly all that's going on, even though I've been doing this for two and a half years. The Forest Service did not provide a comment period for a notice that was issued in the Federal Register on June 5th. The draft record of decision was published the same day as the final environmental impact statement. And already on March 24th, Joby Tim, the forest supervisor, had rejected the FERC imposed schedule. They said that the Endangered Species Act and the National Historic Preservation Act need to be completed, all those consultations need to be completed first, and the Forest Service need to have all the information, need to make those decisions. And this would include the requested data analysis and design criteria. All avoidance, minimization, mitigation measures must have been identified, agreed upon, and disclosed to the public through the NEPA process. The letter also advised FERC that the Forest Service cannot make decisions for authorizing special use or approving any land and resource management planned amendments until the order is certificated by FERC. The consultations are not complete, the mitigation measures have not been identified, and disclosed to the public through the NEPA process, and the order is not certificated. The first time the Forest Service even mentioned the planning regulations was in June 5th Federal Register notice, for which the public was not given an opportunity to comment. The proposed amendments to the Forest Plan undermine the achievement of the goals, objectives, and direction of the Forest Plan. Furthermore, the unsupported conclusion that the regulations are not implicated is based on mitigation, for which there is no evidence that any mitigation can be effective in the extraordinarily steep terrain with geologic hazards and fragile soil and water systems. The failure to show that mitigation is effective violates the NEPA Environmental Policy Act. So the Forest Service must withdraw the draft record of decision, provide notice on the FERC docket of the information in the June 5th Federal Register notice, and provide a public comment period on the information and notice before reissuing the draft decision. So that's the first letter, that we would like you to look at, change any way you'd like to, but submit for the citizens of Montgomery County. The citizens are already signing this and going to be flooding the Forest Service with this comment. The second letter was to the BLM, Bureau of Land Management. "We want you to object to the timing and length of the comment period for the pending special use permit to grant a right-of-way on the Jefferson National Forest for the Mountain Valley Pipeline." The BLM published its notice in the Federal Register, which we have a copy of, on June 29th, 2017, only six days after the Forest Service initiated its 45-day period for submitting objections to the Forest Service draft record of decision. The BLM comment period is only 30 days and conclude not only before the period in which to submit objections in writing, but also before the conclusion of the objection process, which extends beyond the 45-day written objection period that the Forest Service has. MVP also continues to file information that is relevant to these comment and objection periods on the FERC docket as we speak. That's the second letter. Third letter is to DEQ, which wasn't complete, but if you would like us, we can finish the draft and get it to you. But the main points are that we need more than 45 days to comment on the draft 401 water quality certification. There needs to be comments on uplands, which is what we are, because of the extraordinary sedimentation that's going to be caused by coming over the mountains. So anyway, we thank you for giving this consideration, and these three letters are very important for the citizens of Montgomery County to have, you know, for our government to have a say.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who would like to come forward and address the board on any subject? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll go ahead and close public address. I believe that there is an addendum.
Sir, there is an addendum to add to consent agenda, an additional resolution regarding carryover funding.
Is there a motion in regards to adding the addendum to the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Scheffler.
Aye.
Mr. Mox.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Curry.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next on the agenda is consent agenda with the addendum added to it. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Mr. Mox.
Aye.
Mr. Scheffler.
Aye.
Mr. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Tuck.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Thank you. Next item is under old business, and there we go. Ordinants amending the entitled zoning code of Virginia, excuse me, of the code of Montgomery County, Virginia by amending Section 10-45 to eliminate content-based restrictions and regulations in the county sign ordinance in order to comply with the decision rendered by the U.S. Supreme Court in Reed v. Town of Gilbert, Arizona by amending Section 10-61 by moving signed definitions from 10-61 to 10-45.
So moved. Second. Third.
Discussion.
Now, does this mean, if you got them up now, they're grandpaing in, right?
If the sign is in, and it was legal today, it's legal tomorrow, but if you take that sign down, then it's no longer grandfathered in.
Yeah, and we're not changing size. It's allowed. It's just how we interpret it. If that makes sense, I think it's written, like the content. So the size is the same.
Any other discussion?
And it could be revisited in a year.
Or we could even do it sooner.
If there's a problem.
If no one else has... I've shared with you some of the emails I've gotten, and I guess part of my core belief is you're trying to regulate as less as possible. I did want to share with you the planning commission of how they came up with the window coverage. They start off, and staff utilized Norfolk's window coverage. That is, at 25% of the windows can be covered in signs. And again, a sign is something that you can see from the road. A sign isn't something that you would necessarily see right up front. Staff and the work with the planning commission expanded that to 50%. I have some reservations about it, but I'm willing to see and vote for it and see if we have some problems. If it's something that we are constantly having to enforce, then maybe we should revisit that, and I'm willing to talk about that issue. I don't know if there's anyone else who has issues with the window coverage or not, but...
Does that mean if we vote for this, if somebody's window is 75%, enforcement officer's going to go out there and say, "Take it down"?
No, we are complaint-based. We don't have the staff in Montgomery County. We don't... Emily does not have a ruler that goes out and measures every day on signs. It will be, all right, Todd King complains about Chris Tuck's law office, and I've got, you know, you can read from the outside, Tuck Law or whatever you want to say, in my windows, and it covers up over 50%. So that is how it would be applied, as I understand it, and I'm looking to staff and correct me if I'm wrong. Any other discussion?
My only question is, are the two towns going to do the same thing that we're doing, or do we know?
From my discussions with the two towns that I've heard during liaison meetings, both the towns are not going to get involved with window coverage.
Okay, because I thought that should be brought forward.
And that's... So neither one of the towns are... And speaking with Mayor Barber, he was pretty adamant that he did not believe that the town of Christiansburg was going to get involved with window coverage. And speaking with Mark Burneal at one of the... He agreed and said that they did not plan on doing that in Blacksburg. So we would have that one aspect. There's a lot of other things that we've done with our sign ordinance that give folks more rights in regards to signage than... And sometimes if there was... In trying to merge this and make it content neutral, we ended up going with, all right, one sign would be, let's say, four by eight, and another to get it to comply would be eight by 12. Well, we went with a larger size in many cases to try to accommodate and make sure that we're giving businesses a fair shot at being able to have signs that they need to advertise their businesses and to comply with the United States Supreme Court.
I've got one question. What about the size, you know, of houses? If people got houses they're trying to sell, whether it's through them or... Especially it would be bad, the worst for them than it would be for somebody else coming in to sell the houses, because they got things that they could kind of work them in together. But somebody, no one in particular, but anyone that wants to sell their house and is really, you know, willing to go in the house and have a time when people can come and see and this type of thing, it helps them build it up and maybe sell their house when they want to.
That would... And there could be... That could fall under a couple of different things. I'm looking at Emily. It could be an event. Let's say you're talking about open house. You know, a lot of times someone will do an open house. That would be an event sign, and then it would have to be taken down potentially after that event, similar to election signs rather than, say, political.
When you say an event, you're talking about that one house is the only thing there and it's going to be an event, or...
Well, the way you were kind of describing it was open house, but I've got... So there's that aspect of it, because remember, you can't say, "We're going to regulate for-sale signs or real estate signs," because that would mean we would have to read the sign to be able to regulate it. Rather, there's temporary, permanent signs.
Yeah, it'd be temporary.
And then there's event and directional.
And there is a special provision for property that is for sale listed on MLS or for rent or for sale by owner to have an additional temporary sign. Doesn't speak to what it says. They're allowed to have a for sale or for rent or whatever it wants to be. They don't have to do that, but they are allowed one additional sign.
One additional? How many?
Well, they already had, based on whichever their zoning district was, a certain amount of temporary signage they were allowed to have, and then they're allowed to have an additional up to 32 square feet and up to eight feet in height on a property that's for sale or for rent.
So not as many... Doesn't have to do with how many signs you've got, but it's got to be size-wise. Is that correct?
It can be up to 32, and they can break that down into multiple signs if they'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? And I know there was a motion and a second, and I didn't know if... We've talked about window coverage. We could go either way, and we could eliminate that and say, "Well, revisit it if window coverage becomes an issue," or we could, if folks were willing to amend, or we can wait to see if it's a problem and go either direction. But I do want to clarify one thing. There's been some folks that have provided a lot of misinformation, like one, this is something that we wanted to do. That's incorrect. There's folks that have said that, in regards, and made some pretty disparaging remarks about some folks, and we've got a really good planning department. We've got great folks who volunteer to be on the planning commission and work very hard through that. And I don't want anybody to think that my vote is persuaded by folks who are providing misinformation and fear and those type of things, rather it's my belief as far as regulating less, and that's something I just kind of follow into place. And that's the only issue I have in regards to sign ordinance, this amazing amount of work that has been done, and that's one small issue.
Well, I'm willing to, you know, give it a try, and then if it seems that we're getting a lot of complaints back through Emily or the planning commission or whatever, we could revisit that part of it, because that's the only part I had a question about was the window covering.
Perhaps we could have the staff come back and report in a few months to see how many complaints we've had.
Well, they shouldn't see no difference if you're not going to go out there and measure. You know what I'm saying?
Complaints. Let's say that somebody starts complaining about... I'll use myself as example, or my brother's got a pawn shop, and let's say he's got his coverage, and it is out in the county, and he's got window coverage of 100%, and you complain about it. Well, then that complaint is going to be going to the planning staff. Then they're going to go out and say, "Okay, this is over 50% coverage." And I'm seeing heads nod, so I'm getting...
So that won't be grandpaing in?
Well, let's say that my brother, a lot of times pawn shops, let's say he's doing a big sale on DVDs.
Right.
And so he puts up a temporary sign that covers all the windows, 100% coverage. He's got DVDs for sale, and it's a big D and a V and a D, and it covers up everything. And then you complain about it. Well, then the staff will come out and say, "Look, that's not in compliance. You need to change that," as I understand it, or at least look at it. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Can we look at instead of a year or six months?
Sure.
I'm just afraid we're stepping on them.
I'm worried about it a little bit, and frankly, when I hear that we're going to be regulating more than the two towns. But at the same time, I did, when I was down in Savannah, I was on vacation, I saw some of the stores that had 100% window coverage, these routes. They don't... They're very distracting in some ways because you can't see. There's just so much on them, and it's hard to see in.
I think it's important also to point out, or I guess to revisit, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm not sure what Mr. Tuttle's role is on the Business Climate Task Force, but they did both speak in favor of the sign ordinance. I've talked to several other business owners in both towns and in the county, and haven't heard any disagreement outside of the few comments that we've gotten. So I just think that's an important part of the conversation, that the Chamber of Commerce has come out and fully supported the ordinance.
And I think that goes to credit to our staff because they reached out, and I think there were three meetings with the Chamber to try to get something that the business community liked.
And they came to the Business Climate Committee, because I serve on that, and I think we need to remember too, that the Chamber represents 700 businesses.
Yeah. Is there any other additional discussion? Being done, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye, with the understanding that we'll be reviewing it in six months.
Yes.
Next, in regards to new business, let's see, make sure I don't... Schedule a public hearing for Habitat through Humanities request for exemption from real estate, real property tax. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is county attorney's report. And county administrators' report?
Just one item. I had an opportunity Saturday night to attend my very first Mount Tabor Ruption Cut Fish Fry, been trying to get that in. That was on the bucket list, so I finally got that one done, but it was a great turnout. I think you guys, from what I heard, were four shy of your record that evening. That was quite an event, and I would encourage folks in other parts of the county, if you haven't ever participated in that, it's a wonderful community event, a good opportunity to see a lot of folks. But outside of that, no comments this evening.
Next is board members' report. Supervisor Perkins?
No report, please.
Supervisor Biggs?
Just two things. What will we do about the letters that Ms. Major's brought up about the pipeline? Are we going to ask staff to look at that, or what should we do?
I would like Marty and the staff to kind of take a look at that and see, making sure, and is that, is there a consensus to review the letters, use those as a potential outline?
I think so.
Okay, I'm seeing all nods up. Is there anything else?
The only other thing I had goes back to signs, and I was talking to some folks today, and they wanted to know why it is that Montgomery County doesn't have a sign as you come into the county, like a nice sign like Giles County and Pulaski County, announcing that you're in their county, and all we have is, you know, like on 81, we have the certified business thing. And I said, "Well, you know, actually, that question has come up before," and it just never went anywhere. And then I thought, "Well, why don't we have one?" So I thought, "I bring it up, and something maybe, you know, I don't know if y'all want to look at it in the future or have staff look at it, but you know, we are the growing county in this area, and we are the county that's recognized, and we don't have a sign saying, 'Welcome to Montgomery County.'" So anyway, I just thought I'd pop that up since we were talking about signs.
Just one comment on that. We actually did look at that. I think Supervisor Creed brought it up right after I came here, and the big challenge that we run into is you have to acquire easements and rights-of-way off the road to be able to put those up. You can't, VDOT will not allow those to be constructed in rights-of-way, and so after identifying several parcels and trying to have some discussion, candidly, it never went anywhere. So if we can find staff time to dedicate to that effort again...
With everything else on your plate, right on that.
We'll see what we can do. We need a, we need a right-of-way agent.
And that's all I had. I think Ms. Perkins thought of something down there, I don't know.
I can finish. I'll wait till you all finish, just announcement.
Supervisor Demots?
I don't have a report, but I do have a question, just so we have it out there and on the TV and for everybody here. When are we going to be voting on the Mount Tabor Road through truck restriction?
I would, I know we've got the Poth property coming up, and, but I would like to try to see if we couldn't vote on it, if not, at the next July meeting, first meeting in August. I think that would be pretty important, especially when you're hearing over and over and over again. I mean, even the publicity where the UVA truck got hung up, and, all right, as a lifelong resident of Montgomery County and a Hokies fan, that was a little bit funny, but I'm sure that people didn't appreciate seeing that tractor trailer stuck in that curve. But do you all, I'm looking at Marty and Craig, do you think we could have stuff ready?
Do you have to wait for Roanoke to act?
No, Roanoke's waiting for us to act. Yeah, Roanoke, and I was going to add that clarification, because we're the ones that have initiated this discussion, Roanoke County's waiting for us to pass a resolution. Once we pass a resolution, they'll hold, they'll hold their public hearing, then they'll pass a resolution. So that's the process. And then once we both pass a resolution, it goes to VDOT, and they take care of the signage.
So sooner or later?
So July 24th, most likely.
All right. And Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor Creed? Supervisor King?
Just a couple of things. Where we at on our flag boxes?
I need to, I thought of that before I came in here tonight. We're, we need to get back in touch with NACO, and I need to find out where that is.
There she is.
No, I think that was in my baby, I'll find out.
Maybe when I go to the conference, I'll have some just sort of out there I could take. What do you think?
Slide 10 and bring it back with you.
And I know we discussed about the county flags. Are we any closer to getting flags for the county?
Steve Phillips was working on that, and that has not, to my knowledge, been picked up since we lost Steve. So I will revisit that and see if we can get somebody else on it.
And one more thing. I appreciate everything that staff does. Emily, I do appreciate you. I know sometime I throw questions out there. But I do appreciate each and every one of them.
Thank you.
Thanks. A couple of things. I know that staff was looking for guidance on a couple of different issues. County Administrator issued an email. I was on vacation and trying to abide by my wife's wishes and not read county emails during that week, but if folks, I know that there's going to be some requests in regards to some property that some folks towards Radford are asking to be annexed in the city. I know there's some additional boundary line. If we could get some feedback to the county and send some emails and just let county Administrator and staff give them some guidance, I know that they would appreciate that.
Let me say something about that. You know, they've got, according to the paper that I read, they didn't know what we had of the county that we could swap off of. And I don't know that we have anything, but I do know that we have something that we've talked about swapping off on several times when we have something before us that we have and they don't, and they want it, and if we cross the thing and just give it all to them, then I don't know what you do with that. But if you, if we can take something and say, you know, "Y'all got something that we have to pay you every month, or every quarter, or whatever, in order to keep your stuff going, how about just doing a little bit of that?"
And that's something we can explore, but I'll just tell you personally, I'm very reluctant to give up any of the county land because that means it's gone forever.
Well, we did just as much land, though.
I understand. Now, if we get something back for it, that's a totally different creature, but I, and that's just my perspective, but I know that staff is looking for guidance in regards to that, so if we could get some emails back, and I know that county administrator would appreciate it, so. They're not helping. Okay.
I want you to help me on this one, Craig, too. You know, several weeks ago, I had the last meeting, I think it was, you asked me if I could be ready for community meetings by the next meeting. And since then, after that meeting, I did talk to the people who owned the land, and I haven't heard from anybody in that area about it, other than what we've heard here at this, at this board meetings, board meeting. So I talked with Craig, and Craig, you want to?
Sure. There've been several folks that have contacted us as far as a potential meeting, and what we've heard, and I think what Supervisor Perkins has heard as well, is really all the folks that had concerns or issues with regard, and we're talking about the Poth property and the potential boundary adjustment, that those folks have had several opportunities to express their concerns, express their issues. They've been to this board, they've been to the town of Blacksburg, and there was also a community meeting that the property owner held as well. So the consensus I heard from several people was that they really didn't see a need to have an additional meeting, another community meeting, because there was no new information really to share with anybody. All the discussion, all the information was already out there, so...
And so between what Craig said and what I've said, I think probably it would not be beneficial to have a community meeting there. I think even when the owners had a meeting, I think they said they sent out 200 announcements and invitations for people to come, and I think maybe, I don't know the number, but it's not, so I hesitate to say, but it was a very small number, like maybe six or eight or two or what, I don't know, but it was a very small number.
Well, I spoke with him, and he told me that he'd had two meetings, and the first one, there were like 40 people, and then the second one, there was only five or six.
Yeah, it was a small thing. So he did not tell me he'd had two meetings. He told me that at the, at the meeting he had, that he sent out 200 invitations for people to come, and he only had a very small number of people to attend. So I wanted to ask your feelings as a board, since I'm the one that brought it up, and I'd heard from some other board members, that we perhaps just not have that community meeting to, unless, I hear differently from people out there in the community, which I have not heard, and that we just forego that, and then we move forward with our consideration. And for what we heard here in this meeting, and of course, people who live in that area are always welcome to come and talk to us in public address. And I'm not sure just exactly when that's going to come to us, but nevertheless, I think it would probably be redundant to have a meeting.
It will be on the July 24th, and we could make sure they have public address before that was voted on, so folks could come and express. See, I don't mind saying that I'm, this is in your district, it's close to your district as well. I'm going to let y'all take the lead, and you've reached out to folks, and if you don't think it's necessary to have that meeting or it's almost redundant, I'm fine with that. If you think it's necessary and that you need to have it, I'm going to support you because this is an issue in your district.
Sure. Well, I wanted to know if the rest of the board is okay to have, not have a meeting, but if you wish to have it, that you let me know when we get forward on it.
Well, I just have a question. So what would come before the 24th still would not address any concerns about anyone's water, if their water table is disturbed that are outside?
It may have information about that, because we did ask for it in a number of ways, and the one lady addressed us about that. Where is, what is your thinking on that?
That seemed to be the issue.
I'm not really sure how staff's going to address that issue. You know, the, in our conversations with the town of Blacksburg, if the property is, if there's a boundary adjustment made into the town, then they, of course, for any future development, would require utility connections, i.e. water and sewer. So they would be responsible for the development, the stormwater issues, the water and sewer. If it remains in the county, the property owner by right can develop single-family residential, but until any plans are brought forth as to, you know, how that development would take place, it's hard to say without seeing any definitive plans as to what would be proposed to be developed there, how that would impact.
Well, and it's important to note, too, that if they developed in the county by right, single-family residential, that would be a well and septic for each of those homes.
That's correct.
And so when you're looking at it and thinking, what could be developed here, and what would the impact be on the water table, that would be a lot of wells and septics to drill down in and possibly alter or change the flow of the water table, or have some form of impact to it.
Well, it certainly, it certainly would, and it's not that we're not concerned, and that I'm not concerned about that water situation, but we did hear from people at the meeting that we had talk about this. So individuals are available to come talk to us when we'd like to. If the, when we get ready to talk about this, when we get ready to vote for it, then we just vote, and if we do not wish that we give it to or have the boundary adjustment with the town of Blacksburg, then that fails, right, Mr. Meadows? If we are willing to go ahead with the boundary adjustment with the town of Blacksburg, then they are responsible then for what takes place. What we do know is that if they do it, if the owners develop it now, and I hope, I think I'm right on this, Marty, you can tell me, that if, if we don't go ahead with the boundary adjustment, and it remains a part of the county, and the owners wish to develop it, then they have to figure out how they can do well and septic. Is it one big well? And it has to be individual septics, obviously. And what the, what I understand from the people who have told me about the geography of the land, there's, there really is a great deal of land there that cannot really hold wells or septics or what have you, because there's so much carst land there that there's, what do I call them, sinkholes?
And if they're developed, if they're developed a single-family residential too, the health department has to certify the septic, the septic areas, and so, you know, whether it perks or not, there, that's why it's been very difficult to try to answer, well, what happens? It really depends.
Yeah. We don't, we don't know, because we don't know until the individuals who want to develop it go to all these various entities to find out what they can and cannot do, as well as coming to Montgomery County, to our staff, and finding out what can be done and can't be done. Is that correct, Mr. Meadows? So it's a, it's a catch-22, maybe, I don't know. It is just a very difficult thing that we've looked at several times in my past 20 years. I know we've looked at it at least two other times very seriously about what needs to be done and the response to, from the town of Blacksburg for that, and it has not been positive until now, and I believe the town of Blacksburg has said, "Okay." Have they not agreed to that, right?
I think they're waiting on us to make our decision, yes.
And I think they will then decide whether yes or no. So do you wish that we go ahead and make a definitive effort to find out more about the water? Or shall we just proceed as we have originally scheduled, but without any public hearing about it?
Could we write a letter to the town of Blacksburg asking for a response before the 24th, just saying to verify? I know Mr. Motz reached out and received two board members. two board members, or two council members, excuse me, that said, "No way, we're not going to extend water if there's problems in, for individuals."
Right.
Who are outside of this area.
I've heard that, too.
We can make a formal request, uh, and try to get that, uh, just saying, this was discussed by two council members, is this the town's policy that they would not extend if there was a hardship, somebody's well does go dry because of development? Um, is that something, I'm looking to staff, is it something that we could get out right away?
Probably the simplest way to do that would be an email from me to.
Tomorrow.
Town manager tomorrow.
Okay.
And ask for a response.
Thank you.
I would like that, because then it would be in writing.
I think the other thing we can add is the, the county engineers are out there, he's looked at, he knows what's there now, so he could provide an update on that as to storm water and E and S issues, just talk about cars and erosion, and, so he can tell you what's there now, but what Craig said, he can't really tell you what the future's going to look, because we don't know what kind of development. He can tell you what people are going to have to do to develop.
Right.
And the town, you know, is going to be, you know, maybe even more restricted, so.
Well, for the, yeah, for the people that live there, we are concerned if what goes on.
Sure.
Hits their water table and what have you. I mean, it's very important, but at the same time, um, what we're talking about is should we have a community meeting there, because what we're going to find out is that everybody gets concerned when you start talking about their water.
Well, let's get a consensus.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Right, okay, and I guess I'm looking to our other members. Are you okay, both of you, with not having a community meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And sending the letter.
And sending the letter.
Yeah, if you want to send the letter.
Okay.
I'm sorry that we can't do that, but, um.
Well, no, I, now.
We don't need to be redundant.
Okay, I was going to say, no, it's not that we can't do that.
No, we can't, but I mean, it's, it's not worth, uh, the redundancy if those people have already had an opportunity to express how they feel.
All right, there's not anything else before the board? This meeting is adjourned.